Good evening, like the college called where the council meeting for December 27th, 2018, 6:00 P.M.
Councilman Coles. Councilman Bean.
Here.
Councilwoman Wozniacki.
Here.
Councilwoman Thomas there. And actually.
All stands in place, your name is please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes on November 21st, of November 21st, 2018, council, uh, Madison council meeting. Go second.
Second.
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes on November 30th, 2018, Madison special meeting.
Second.
Second.
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
And I'd like to motion to approve the minutes of December 13th, 2018, a Madison work session.
Thank you.
Go second.
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, we will now take any public comment on agenda items only. We ask for you to keep it three minutes or just a little bit above it if you can.
I got a couple real quick questions, uh, just looking at, uh...
Please sign your book.
Um, just real quick, uh, first off, there's a motion to approve the adopt the 2019 budget with a decrease of .33 mils. I assume that's from the 6% is really 5.67% increase and a .33% decrease, so just make sure you see that. Uh, the other thing is ordinance number seven, 2018, uh, could somebody just real quick give me the highlights of what money that is and what, what that's the money's going to be used for?
That's for the budget.
That's, that's the actual budget order.
That's the entire budget?
Yeah. You have to pass it.
Okay, okay, that's fine, that's, that's what I understand that. And then, uh, the, uh, eight, uh, ordinance, uh, eight, 2018, is to approve the budget that we've been talking about.
That's the tax levy.
That's the tax levy.
Yeah, one of the budget ones.
There you go, okay, just want to make sure I understood that. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Jared?
Members of the Madison City Council, ladies and gentlemen, the report is for November, garbage fees and city real estate taxes collected for the month. Garbage fees, revenues, we have current garbage for November, income $8,580.75, year to date, 2018, $336,496.49, budget amount was $340,000, which is very close to meeting that. Garbage fees, delinquents, we collected through November, $3,059.11, year to date, $15,577.95, 2018 budget amount, $105,000. Garbage housing authority quarterly, for November, we received $15,258.75, year to date, $61,425, budget amount, $62,995, giving us a total of $507,595. Garbage fees collected for 2019, in November, we received $70,971.25, year to date, $80,191.95, 2018 budget amount was $120,000. City real estate taxes, revenues, city real estate taxes curbed for November, $13,387.44, year to date, $1,814,77.68. Budget amount is as follows, general fund was budgeted, $1,282,000, debt service fund budgeted, $479,000, parks fund was budgeted, $188,000, the library fund was budgeted, $50,000, for a total of $1,999,000. Delinquent city taxes, city taxes prior years collected by the city for November, zero, year to date, $4,381.46, 2018 budget was $1,000. City taxes collected by Westmoreland County Tax Claim Bureau, for November, we received $220.67, year to date, $165,381.29, and the 2018 budget amount was $100,000. Total year-to-date taxes, collected, budgeted, $1,983,840.43. The distribution of the tax is as follows, general fund received, $1,272,277.85, debt service fund received, $475,367.48, parks fund received, $186,574.28, library fund received, $49,620.82, for a total of $1,983,840.43. Councilman, I need a, uh, vote on that, and then I have one more report to follow up.
I have a motion to approve the report from our treasurer as specified.
Second.
Question on the motion?
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Okay, my second report is from Westmoreland County Controller's Office, from Jeffrey Blazer, he's the controller. Okay, dear Mr. Saxon, City Treasurer, Madison, 557 Donner Avenue, Madison, 58, Mr. Saxon, we have completed our audit under House Bill 2200 for the period of March 1st, 2017 to February 28th, 2018. At this time, we have no findings, questions, costs, or recommendations of this time. Thank you for your cooperation. Jeffrey Blazer, City, uh, County Controller, so we pass. Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, police report for the month ending November of 2018, parking meter receipts were $1,309.25, fines and forfeits were $630, parking permits was $4,375, miscellaneous collections, prison watch, uh, things of that nature, $845, court receipts from district dresses offices came to $1,470.15, total receipts collected for November 2018, $8,629.40. Uh, quickly arrests for the November, November of 2000, yes, 2018, traffic, there were 83, lawn traffic were 20, criminal were 22, warrant were 13, a total of 138, and so far to the year, it was 1,456. We thank our police for doing a fine job. Okay. I'm a motion to adopt the proposed 2019 budget as amended with an increase, yeah, sorry, with a decrease of 0.33 mils, for a total of 43.11 mils in real estate tax levy as follows, general fund, 27.98 mils, debt service fund, 9.48 mils, parks and recreation fund, 4.70 mils, and the library fund, point, 0.95 mils. Have a motion, go second.
Second.
Any questions on the motion?
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas, and then Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Uh, there'll be a second reading of the proposed ordinance number seven dash 2018, an ordinance of the City of Madison, County of Westmoreland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purpose of the municipal government hereafter set forth during the year 2019. Also like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number seven dash 2018, an ordinance of the City of Madison, County of Westmoreland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purpose of the municipal government hereafter set forth during the year 2019. Go second.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Is the second reading of the proposed ordinance number eight, 2018, an ordinance of the City of Madison, County of Westmoreland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, fixing the tax rate for the year 2019? I'd like to make a motion to adopt the proposed ordinance number eight, two, dash, 2018, an ordinance of the City of Madison, County of Westmoreland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, fixing the tax rate for the year 2019. Go a second.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
I'm a motion to apply for a tax anticipation of increasing the indebtedness of the City of Madison, the amount of $500,000, to a community bank or farmer's bank for settlement in January, January 2019, and to pay any and all fees as required. Go a second.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
I'm a motion to approve contract for technical services for the CDBG program on an as-needed basis between the City of Madison and Nerry Cromwell Act for an hourly rate of $11.40 an hour.
Second.
A second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Motion to approve payment to Ford Business Machines, Inc., for lease of copier for the month of July 2018, to be paid out of CDBG funds in the amount of $75. Go a second.
Second.
Thank you, questions on the motion?
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
I'm a motion to approve a request from the Police Department to hire Jenna Ellis Tappas, is that right? Is that right? Okay, as a part-time police officer at the current rate.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint the following people, I'm going to do them individually, is that already counseled? You should be individual, thank you. Like to appoint Joseph Bozick.
Bozick.
Is it Bozick or Bozick? To a theory, three-year term for the Madison Public Library.
Second.
Go a second.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Sorry, Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Cindy Gigi Leoni.
Gigi Leoni.
To the Madison Public Library for a three-year term.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
And I'd like to, uh, for, uh, I'd like to make a motion to accept April Kadeish for a third year, for a three-year term on the Madison Public Library.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Okay. While we're at it, I would like to make a motion to appoint Katherine Tucker to a five-year term on the Lawn Valley Refuge Authority.
Second.
Go second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for Daryl Ray to be appointed to the Madison Planning Commission, it carries a four-year term.
Second.
Go second.
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
I'd like to mention there were two positions open for that, but only one person applied, so if anybody else wants to apply. Uh, there, I'm going to go back to the ones that I still need to do, I don't go through the other ones. There was one position open for the Lawn Valley Refuge Authority for a five-year term, we had nobody applied, so it's still open. We also had one position open for the vacant property review board for a five-year term, it was, it was also open. There's also two positions open for the property maintenance board to review, that carries a five-year term. And there was a Westmoreland County TCC delegates, an open position, or one delegate or one or two ordinance for a one-year term, it's still open.
Isn't there a record?
One or two.
Yeah, I didn't get that one, it didn't say how many years ago. Then there was one position still left open for the recreation board, I believe it's what, four-year?
I'm pretty sure it's four.
Okay. Uh, lastly, I'd like a, I, I'm not going to need a motion on this, but I am going to appoint Donald Byron to refill the position on the redevelopment authority, uh, this is the same position that apparently the mayor did by his letter this month. Uh, the reason I'm doing it is because in the third-class city code, it clearly states in the absence of the mayor, the deputy mayor will assume all authority and responsibility. Being that the mayor has not showed up for meeting number 21, I would say that he is absent from his authority of distinguishing himself as the mayor, so I am in charge of making that appointment, and I so do make that appointment. Okay. There's a library board, uh, report for the month ending November 2018, there's a library board financial report for the month ending November 2018. Make a motion to approve payment to Ritteniron Sons Construction Company, Inc., for periodic estimate number four, invoice number MLM 005, in the amount of $30,000, for the 2018 downtown Madison demolition and site clearance project, clearance project, per the recommendation of WEC, Inc., to be paid out of the bond refinancing funds. Go a second.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
I'm a motion to approve resolution number 15 dash 2018, a resolution of the, the council of the City of Madison, Westmoreland County, Pennsylvania, establishing amounts for fees relating to permits, licenses, inspections, and other various matters.
Second.
Go a second, question on the motion?
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes. There is a street report for the month of November 2018, when I noted that street report is at, just to make note that the main streets and the bus routes, we pile first and sell the first, then the side roads, alleys last, so if you know that a storm is coming, you might want to park, park on the front part for your convenience, because that's, that's the order in which they will do the streets, okay? But, um, there is a report if you'd like to see that, there's also Parks Department report for November 2018, and there's a motion sent in a letter of thanks and appreciation to Marshes Valley for a donation toward the cost of electricity for the city's Christmas lights.
Second.
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Thomas.
You're welcome.
Councilman Bean?
Hey, everybody. Let me get to the, uh, what's up? Code Office Financials and Code Office Report for the month of November, um, just touch on it. In November, totals were about $3,000, just a little bit over, um, but for the 2018 year-to-date, the Code Office has brought in $228,081.50. For November, that included 10 habitation permits, 11 correction letters, 24 miscellaneous complaints, and one MO permit, and four citations in a zoning hearing. Fire report for November, um, month of November, the members of the Madison Fire Department Company's 1 and 2 devoted a total of 343 man-hours towards the safety of the City of Madison and surrounding communities, as always, thank you to my firemen, I really appreciate the effort. You guys hustle, really good, appreciate it. Emergency medical service report for November, 121 emergency calls, nine fire standbys, three public service, for a total of 133 incidents. And I do not have the record report. Yeah, that's right. No report needed always, got you. Another thing, I just want to mention real quick, since it's considered public safety, there's a, that whole DEP approval thing for the best medical down there, about the radiation thing, um, the building was sold in 2016, that had nothing to do with this council, DEP was solicited for their approval for the permit in 2016, once again, that had nothing to do with this council, uh, DEP just approved that, apparently, um, there's nothing this council can do about that, if you have any complaints or issues regarding that, I highly suggest you write to the state, or the DEP in particular, as they are the ones who approved it, not us. Am I clear?
Yep.
Thank you.
Chris. It's all you have. Thank you, Councilman Bean. Wayne?
Following is the general fund community bank checking account bank reconciliation as of November 30th, 2018, beginning balance, $86,072.92, deposits totaled, $988,228.94, for a total of $1,074,299.86. Checks cash totaled, $791,229.53, leaving a bank balance of $283,070.33. Deposits and transit, $3,887.22, outstanding checks totaled, $175,500.96, because there was an adjustment of $3,724.32, leaving a final amount reconciled in the balance sheet of $115,180, I'm sorry, excuse me, $115,180.91. Next is the CDBG fund report, beginning bank balance, $13,458.4, deposits total of $18,827.57, for a total of $32,285.61. Checks cash totaled, $11,334.34, leaving a total of balance of $20,985.27. There was one outstanding check, $7,383.75, leaving a final month-end balance of $13,601.52. That's the CDBG fund report.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Controller's report for the month of November 2018, and the CDBG report for the month of November 2018. Just CDBG?
Second.
Second.
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Thank you. And I apologize, Solicitor, for stepping over and not putting it in line here, you return, please.
Thanks. I worked with the city administrator and code enforcement regarding that resolution, that just sets the fees for, uh, permits, street opening permits, um, inspections, rental of any park facilities, uh, just want to also mention that still working with the code enforcement to, uh, collect delinquent garbage, look, it's a long list, there's probably a 95% chance that everybody knows somebody on that list in here, spread the word, tell them the city's coming after them, um, we're issuing letters, you have to go to the magistrate, we will.
Back to closing my report, please, thank you. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to reappoint the Darrow, Natta, and Campus PC as the city's solicitor. Go a second.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
A motion to approve payment on checks already released from the general fund for the month, for the month of December 2018, in the amount of $43,984.32. Go a second.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
And a motion to approve electronic transfers from the general fund to the payroll fund for payroll for December 2018, in the amount of $95,679.10.
Thank you.
Go a second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
A motion to approve electronic transfers from the general fund to the healthcare account for healthcare expenditures for the month of December 2018, in the amount of $55,000.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
A motion to approve payment of the general fund expenditures for the month of November and December 2018, in the amount of $149,590.30. Go a second.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Motion to approve payment of the parks fund expenditures for the month of December 2018, in the amount of $1,331.96.
Second.
Thank you, second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Motion to approve payment of the recreational board expenditures for the month of December 2018, in the amount of $341.96.
Second.
A second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
A motion to approve payment of lawn usage fund expenditures for the month of December 2018, in the amount of $31,103.17. Second. Go a second.
I said so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I wasn't sure if I caught that, I'm sorry. Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
A motion to approve payment of the grant fund expenditures for the month of December 2018, in the amount of $7,883.99.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
A motion to approve payment of liquid fuels expenditures for the month of December 2018, in the amount of $4,623.42.
Second.
Go a second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
A motion to approve payment of capital improvement expenditures for the month of December 2018, in the amount of $3,505.
Second.
Thank you, questions on the motion?
Councilman Bean.
Aye.
Councilman Wozniacki.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
At this time, we will take public comment on non-agenda items, or anything else you'd like to say, we'd like you to hold it to around three minutes, please state your name.
Does this thing work here? I definitely like it, brother. When I came back to Madison in 2005, I bought a piece of property.
Your name, sir?
Thomas C. Murikovich.
Thank you.
926 Alley, Zander Avenue, when I came back to Madison in 2005, I bought a piece of property, it consisted of two parcels, a house on two lots and another, and another lot. When the, when the lawyer finished his search, he gave me the title, I went and picked it up, and I went out to City Hall to pay the taxes, and I went and saw Frank Mizudo, who was there at the time. I paid the taxes on the house and two lots, I did not pay the taxes on a third one, and I said, Frank, I want to pay it, and he said, you can't, I said, why not? He said, uh, I, there's a detail I have to take care of, well, I came back about a week later, the same thing, and I said, look, Frank, why can't I pay it? He said, it's never been on the books, one lot had never been on the books, he had to process it through the county, you know, the tax office, and, uh, I wonder how many other properties in Madison are like that, because about a month later, I saw a property for Sheriff's, up above Ontario. Because about a month later, I saw a property for Sheriff's Up, up above Ontario, and the taxes on it were thirty-two thousand dollars. And I thought, gee, that's kind of high for, for a property. Now, how do you get that far behind? Thirty-two thousand dollars, the person was deceased, and now the taxes came due. So, I wonder how many other properties in Menneson, Mennesse are in that situation? And can you, anyone on council assure me that all the properties in Menneson are on the tax roll? And if not, why?
I'm not sure we can assure you 100%, but I'm, thank you for bringing that to our attention, and I'm sure we could...
What can be done about it?
I'm sure we can go through, what, the county?
Every computer.
The county has it. You know, the county would have to get involved, and we could probably make sure that does not ever happen, but thank you.
The other thing I want to ask is, look, when we talk about the property across the track, every time it comes up, how's the people look this way, that way, look to the attorney? And he said last time that he would look into it. Now, can you, by the next meeting, can you tell me why we cannot tax the property across the tracks?
I can answer that right now. We can't file an assessment or an appeal for the assessment until next year.
Oh, okay, are we going to do that next year?
Yes, sir.
Researching not only that property, but all the other large commercial properties, where they're assessed.
Are we collecting the wage taxes there? How much in wage taxes are we collecting across the tracks? A lot of people work.
Not specific, we don't get the records as to each person who pays their taxes. We only get an amalgamated amount of money.
How do you know we're getting all our money?
Yeah. We could inquire of the tax collector themselves, you know.
Well, why, how do you?
They have to live in Menneson.
Who's the tax collector?
Bert Conner.
Oh, okay, wow.
Yeah, I think you have to live in Menneson too, so.
No, for earning income.
Which tax was it that they have to live in the city? Is that the LST tax?
They have to work in the city for LST.
LST, okay.
And every time, they have to live.
Okay, so Anthony Potashia, 49 over, drove drive from Menneson. I want to thank council, it's a hard job, and you guys are doing a great job. I mean, it's really difficult, you're going to make a lot of tough decisions, and no matter what you do, you're going to be wrong. Okay? I want to thank the people in the audience who come to every meeting, because they care about the city. So, the people that are here every meeting, they show me they take care. The other thing I want to bring up, I just want to finish a point that I was making last meeting. And, you know, you do what you're going to do, and that's fine. You know, you have to make the final decision, but the reason why I thought garbage fees should go up before taxes was because when you, when you raise the garbage fees, all right, like Solicitor Delfonso said, it's easier to collect garbage fees than it is delinquent taxes. And he can take you to court, okay? It's a smaller amount, and when you live in that house, you're putting out garbage, am I right? So, everyone knows you're there. So, when you go put out the garbage, they have to collect it, because if not, it's a health hazard. But they know you're in that house. Now, with delinquent taxes, when you raise them 5.67 mils, what happens in some cases, we had a guy when I was the mayor, who lives in New York. I'm not going to mention his name, but he said, "I'm just not paying." Now, when you raise them six mils, if he hasn't paid before, is he going to pay this time? No. You're not going to New York to go catch this guy, okay? You're going to file citation or whatever you may do, he's not going to come back. Okay? You'll never see that money. The other thing is, when you raise taxes, and it has to be done, it's ultimately going to have to be done, but people own 10 and 12 buildings, eight buildings, some people have corner lots. So, now you're saying, "Hey, you know what? I may have to have an increase of 400 to 500 dollars instead of 100." The school board's going to end up raising taxes again. So, that's why I thought, hey, it's easier to get the garbage fees. It's coming up for contract next, next year.
2020.
2020, okay. What if, and it's probably not going to happen, but what if it goes lower? What if there's a lower bidder, okay? And then all of a sudden, like you said, "Well, we're going to raise garbage next year." Well, if there's a lower bidder, you know, you may want to, you may want to look at that also. So, I thought it'd be more appropriate if you raised garbage this year, save your tax increase for next year. Because you don't know, right now we have a mild winter, am I right? So far, you haven't had to go out there many times and salt the roads. You don't know who's going to retire, you don't know how many delinquent garbage fees you're going to get. Okay? So, that's why I was trying to bring up the point, do garbage first, do your taxes second, or even a combination.
The point Tony is, fortunately, if we didn't raise them to where they're at, as opposed to the past tonight, we would have a balance plan, we'd come nowhere close to being balanced. Trust me, this was, this wasn't pleasant.
No, you can, you would opt the garbage collection.
Like, extremely.
All right, the other, the other issue I wanted to say too, is with, with delinquencies, like Solicitor Delfonso mentioned, so we're going to take you to court, we're going to try to get that money. I tried, when I was the mayor, before I left, to try to set up a plan where people can make payments. At any point in somebody's life, you're going to run into a hardship. You know, I'm in one myself, going through a divorce. So, money's going to get tight, you're going to get behind. That's understandable. But could we work with the people, which is what I was trying to do? You've got Apple Pay, you've got cell phones now, you've got all kinds of devices that we didn't have in 2008 and '09 to set up payment plans, just, just throw this out there, maybe we can get more money.
That's open to anyone, under any circumstance. I think that's always been the policy for any administration, they're not going to turn anything down. I mean, hell, I would probably see if someone wanted to bid Bitcoin, try to figure out how to do that.
Okay.
But, you know, hardships happen all over the time. And the city is always there for its citizens, and will do whatever it needs to be. If it was something of a dollar a week, it doesn't matter. But people have to come and let the city know why they're delinquent.
Right, right.
And have to come forward and say, "Hey, can I set something up? It's private, nobody hears your name, it'll never be known, you're not going to get advertised." You know, that's anywhere, but that's no different, Tony, than if you can't pay your taxes, I'm guessing you probably can't pay your credit card bills, or you can't pay this, or you can't pay that. It's the same thing, I'm assuming you would go to your creditors and say, "Hey, I'm in a hardship." You know, just like people who work for the federal government right now with the shutdown.
And the reason we had to go to this avenue, for him to go after them in courts, is because the last three years, residents have sent a city quarter of a million dollars. They weren't coming knocking on our door to pay the stuff, so we had to take drastic steps.
But I know when I was here, and we tried to set up payment plans back in those days, and Jerry can tell you this, you couldn't do it by credit card because of the school district, there was an issue with that, it was real hard. So, they said, "Well, just give us the full amount, we want full amount." So, hopefully, over the years here, it's worked out to where you can take payments. Because if somebody's willing to come forward and give you 10 or 20 bucks, yeah, like you're saying, take it. I mean, that's only going to help the city.
We're not going to turn anybody away, and we're also going to help anybody we possibly can.
That's good. All right, well, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. He took five minutes and 15 seconds.
I'm sure he only got these other five minutes.
I don't want you to frame me in three minutes.
No, you're good, but I want to add this, if it's about the radiation thing, you can sit down right now, because there's nothing you can legally do.
That, that isn't true either.
It is true.
No way.
Yes, it is. And it was passed in 2016, and I will...
2016, Gary Manis Law, that's the people, you guys have just endorsed it, they continue, continue, continue. So, he is here, this, this council is present, and it's after the fact.
Wait.
You guys keep... You're just perpetuating it.
In 2016, I didn't sit here, how was I here?
The council, Gary Manis Council, who put that deal together was here.
First of all, it wasn't Gary Manis Council, it was the city of Menneson taxpayers' council. Let's get something straight there, that's one.
I'll let him speak, Ernie, or I will have you removed, I'm tired of your shit.
Then two.
You guys keep interfering with me all the time.
You were the only person here that made progress.
Yeah, I heard the person say, "What's going on with you?" I don't blame you, like, I have any...
You're a rude person, huh? You're very rude.
Ernie.
Because you can't take the heat.
Ernie.
I've been deployed to three combat zones, I think I can take the heat, Ernie.
No, you can't take some of the heat.
Okay, first of all, it wasn't Gary Manis Council, it was the taxpayers, the citizens of Menneson, that's one. Two.
Excuse me, Mr. Orca Kaffee.
Wozniakowski?
It was the taxpayers and who?
I said it was the citizens of Menneson.
No, what?
They weren't involved, they said, "Don't give us that bullshit."
Don't blame that on us.
Your turn. We voted for people.
The council.
He's talking about the council, that's all I said, was council. That's all I said.
The people in Menneson.
Voted for the, voted for the...
I'm not here, oh yeah, don't keep lying.
What's, what's your second?
Okay, now.
What's your second, what's your question?
Okay, now, was that property?
Don't get closer to this table.
That property, what zone is... What zone is that?
He's going to have to pay his taxes.
Okay, you know, I want to have promotion for the radiation storage, it has to be industrial. So, you guys don't even know your laws here. And there are six different avenues, that we're going to come after this, and then we're going to put down everybody, because this is collusion. This town is dying, and you guys are willing to give all this garbage, radioactive garbage, so somebody can make money under the table?
What you staring at? Turn around, Lacy. Staring at the wall.
What's your point, man?
What's staring at me?
The point is, the point is, you, your council, the school board council, went to work, going to summer, to lower that Indians' tax burden, property school tax, 72,940.
The court orders.
And now it stands to make millions.
A judge issued an order and signed it.
Judges are bought, but paid for, okay? If you have a... Don't give that judge, a judge is bought.
Ike, please tell me you have that on video, the one, he's going to have a harder time. Referred to somebody by their country origin, because he doesn't, I don't know, he has a personal problem.
He's talking with Americans, I don't know how to call Americans.
Actually, he is.
I can't call them Americans.
Actually, he is.
No, he isn't.
Do you know that refector?
Yeah.
Have you seen if he has?
Well, where's his residence at? Is he on residence?
Ernie, telegraphed. Ernie, I can solve all your problems.
We're on United States.
Second, did you, did you get the, he said a judge is corrupt? Please, did you get that on video?
Only on 11.
Okay.
Going down the trail, Ernie.
I'm going to make this very simple, you can solve all these issues. You're welcome to have the seat anytime you want the next election. Please do so. Either, and I'll tell you the same thing anybody else was, either put up or shut up. Because if you can't, the cheap seats are easy, sitting up here is quite different. So, if you want to change it, and I applaud you for that, there you go.
And I told you, when you first read, you wanted transparency. And you haven't delivered transparency from day one you took this office.
Name one thing I haven't been transparent on.
They're not telling us nothing about what's going on.
What's going on?
Yeah, and then who you hire, you've got all these people that are placed into these peg holes. This boy, that boy, that boy.
Those people apply, did you put your name in for one? Did you put your name in for one? Did you put your name in for?
No one's going to do that. No one's going to document this little lot today. No one's going to put me here.
Did you put your name?
Yeah.
There's, wait a minute, I'm sorry.
That's a yes or no question, there.
Yeah, even you can figure that one out. Okay? There was, what, there's about five or six, I'm sorry, here we go. All right, Ernie. Would you like to be on the planning commission? Would you like to be on the refuge authority? Would you be like to be on the vacant property? Here's a better one that's right up your alley. How about property maintenance, border review, okay? Put yourself to where you should be, and if you want all the, to put all this energy into it...
What about the Moone Valley Initiative?
I'm not appointing a board to the Moone Valley Initiative, that has nothing to do with us.
All right.
If you might do something...
The Moone Valley redevelopment.
No, I'm challenging you publicly.
The Moone Valley redevelopment.
Why don't you apply for one of these?
What about the Moone Valley redevelopment?
Why don't you, what, the redevelopment authority?
Yeah.
Did you put your name in?
No.
Mr. Byron did.
Yes.
Matter of fact, he was the only person that did.
He was the only person that was told to do it. Was he ever told?
Eric, you already had your five minutes, 12 seconds, sit your ass down, shut up. We got to go home, we're hungry.
Ernie.
You're tired of your crap, every minute you were tired of your crap, the same old crap. Pay your taxes, sit your ass down, and go home.
So, that's what it...
Ernie. Ernie, if you want to address council, fine. If you want to address somebody out there, you can wait to afterwards. You can wait for it afterwards. Do you have any more questions, sir?
Yeah, one more thing.
Okay, and please be civil about it.
I'm trying to be civil, but...
You're far from being civil.
You got to tone it down a few knots.
The other guy hits, he's still in the Middle East fighting.
You know what, I commend him for doing what he did.
Well, he got to be reminded, "I'm a defendant."
Okay, I'm going to remind you that you're a taxpayer. You have a comments to say something about?
He don't pay taxes.
Yes, we do.
His mom did.
Ernie, address it up here.
All right.
And that doesn't mean walk up here, that means address it up here. Please. They asked me to be nice tonight, so I'm being nice.
Okay, now, when this building was approved, okay, it had to be approved by what, the zoning and the planning commission, is that right?
That's how it should have happened.
Okay, now, was that made public notice? Each of them had to make public notice for the public to come.
Well, here's the thing, if it's a commercial...
Hold on, can I ask your question?
Can a citizen get pissed off?
It's a give and take kind of thing.
So, you're talking, right, they have this big law permitting process that took a year, right? Do you think they're going to issue a permit for something that's not zoned appropriately?
I don't know, I don't know.
Maybe you should ask them that.
Okay, and we've got a foreign animal to involve, I don't know what that means.
And I'll even go as far as, and I don't know if this is true, but I'm assuming because of radiation, you might even have the nuclear regulatory commission to vote him.
On everything he said.
Well, the paper said something about strudel 90, did you hook up with strudel 90, it is all right?
Every quote.
What do you want me to do? If that gentleman abides to every safety precaution required by law, which he should, which he must, by our laws, and he employs, he employs and brings good revenue to this city, what is the problem?
He hasn't employed anyone in the city yet. Number two, he hasn't paid his taxes yet. How much did you collect on the 9,400 dollars yet, a year?
He pays every month.
How much did you collect on the ninety-four hundred?
He pays their interest.
How much did you pay on the ninety-four hundred?
I don't pay nothing on the ninety-four hundred.
He ain't paying the principal, he's just paying the interest.
There is a principal payment due this year.
It's due this year, well, in twenty-two days, it's gonna be over this year.
No, not this year.
Twenty nineteen.
Well, now it's more than nineteen.
Time's up, get the hook out, time's up.
Okay, Ernie, save it for next month.
You're taking the time, don't let us get the hook out.
About time, Ernie.
Ernie, that was ten minutes.
Just 'cause you ain't allowed to talk at home, you gotta come down here and run your mouth.
Last night, too, you were eleven minutes late.
Hey, Ernie, what's your last name? Telegraphers, you ain't from America either.
Always excited in Manassas.
See, it's better. We're not some good name paper, we're no paper.
My name is Adrian Alteani, eleven sixteen, Rosavore Avenue, Manassas, D.A. Couple things, you and I had spoke outside a little bit, you are gonna call, do you confirm the?
Yes, ma'am.
Legalities of post in that building.
Yeah, yeah.
He did bring up a good point about the zoning, that building, I think, is gonna have to be rezoned.
I don't know off the top of my head whether it is zoned or not, but I will look at it.
If it is considered commercial, not industrial, if he's gonna do any kind of production there, it has to be rezoned. And Mr. Orcha Cowski, you said about the tax paying money, it would bring the revenue. Did you also think, though, as far as expanding the city going forward, that a lot of people are gonna avoid this area because of the things he's gonna be doing in this building?
People could avoid grocery stores because they don't wanna drink milk because they think there's something in it too. I mean, where do you draw the line?
I'm fine with it, that's what I'm drawing.
I mean, if, I don't know what you want.
I'm just asking, you had said to me about, and you said it here, that it would bring revenue, but it also could deter revenue from coming into this area as well.
I've never seen any statistics stating that, man, if you have anything, I'd be more than happy to see it.
Look at Westinghouse, right off of Seventy, they have a whole section that has been destroyed behind Westinghouse, grass on the road.
Well, he's not dumping stuff, let's make it, make it.
I understand he's not dumping, but where they were storing their units, they weren't dumping there either. It was not being dumped, it was stored.
They had a leakage problem or something with their storage, I can't remember off the top of my head.
But what type of storage unit is he putting in? I know it has to be LEAP-based.
Yeah, it has to be, that's DEP, it has to be inspected by them, it has to follow their guidelines.
Now, did he apply for the permits to do this?
He had to wait until he got approved for the permit that they just approved him for, which was the permit to store.
That's been a couple weeks ago, so now, has he applied for his permits to start doing?
That, that's all state, that's.
No, that would be here, he's working on that building.
Oh, the construction permits, no, he is not there.
Now, with it being considered a hazard material, what kind of rate are the construction permits gonna be? Because you said you had raised your permits and issuing permits and inspections, and who will be doing the inspections of this building besides DEP? Who from this council or organization will be inspecting?
It's going to be the city's commercial building inspector, K two engineers, they handle the commercial inspections.
Okay. All right. Another thing I wanted to ask, in reference to your raises on your taxes, I understand it's needed, and I totally agree that it is needed. Have you found any other solutions as far as energy savings or anything after you and I did spoke? Last meeting about that?
Not yet, in regards to that, we did start bringing in a little more revenue with the bag garbage. They said we brought in, what, three grand just from that, and it's starting to, it's starting to come in. I mean, we, like I said, they still were like two, forty-something, two and a half.
No, I'm talking about the energy.
No, we have not had a chance to look at it, by the state, we had to get the first, by the end of the year, or it's, I mean, that's a big, big issue with the state.
Look, the bottom line for that, and I've said it for how many meetings? I don't know if it falls on deaf ears or not, I'll say it one more time. This wasn't pretty, I understand. I mean, this is not pretty, we went round and round and round and round on this. This tax increase will just get us to a balanced budget, it will not give you anything else, unfortunately, which is a shame. In two thousand nineteen, things are gonna change, okay? Those may include some of your services. The city cannot continue the way it's going, it's imploded, it's done. It cannot continue and sustain the tax base of what we bring in and what it's putting out. So I'm just telling you right now, and I'm not sugar putting anything, and Ernie, I am being transparent, and I don't think too many councils have put their, you know, stood out there and put my head in the lion's mouth the way I have since I've been on this board, okay, this council. I've laid it out, I've given, you've gotten figures, I've told everybody what's gonna happen, and it's not pretty, again. It's gonna happen, this isn't for debate, but services may get cut next year. No, and this isn't, I'm not debating.
So after the five businesses that you could collect three hundred grand?
We're not, we're not.
We are, Ernie, and please go to the podium if you're gonna talk, because if you can't tell, if you can't tell, I don't care. She and us, we were having a great conversation, you and us, it's never a great conversation. You should learn from the other people in this audience.
If it wasn't for me, you wouldn't be woken up now.
You wouldn't be woken up?
Woken up.
Won't be woken up?
So, all I'm saying is to answer your question, yes, it was painful, it wasn't nice, it doesn't put us anywhere next year, next year in September, we're gonna be right back in the same situation we are if we don't change the way we run this city. And I promise you, we are going to look at every single penny and expenditure and cost to try to knock it down. The taxpayers, all of you deserve no less than that, okay?
All right, now, we didn't talk about the police department's departments, have you figured out what you're gonna do about that in regards to?
The cars?
Yeah.
Cars, we have on a rotation basis that they can service every five thousand miles.
They just got another ten thousand dollar grant for vehicles only, so, and we still are figuring out if we wanna do a lease program or what, we just, like I said, we've been swamped with this. Everything, we're gonna look at everything that's going in.
Okay, so when you have the next meeting, maybe you'll have some of this.
I will have some answers, yes.
And the other thing is, we have used, as it's come in, more DEA drug money. The DEA officer, we purchased a used two thousand eight Liberty, my wife and I drove all the way to State College to pick up and bring it back, so they had a vehicle, okay? Yeah, we're trying to do little things, the police, we're using their money from the DEA for body cams now. They will have body cams, so it'll be no question, which will keep the officer safe and will keep the residents safe on both sides. We are trying, we are trying right now to get a grant through the, from, is it DCD? We're trying to get a grant to be able to put computers, even not, God forbid, this city doesn't have computers in its police vehicles. So when they pull you over, they gotta call at the station to run your plate. Well, I don't know of any places that have to do that, they're all in the cruisers.
We're the only city within a sixty mile radius that doesn't have computers in their police cars.
Okay, so we're applying for a state grant, or we're looking, no, I'm not saying applying, I don't wanna say the wrong word. We're looking into a state grant that will equip the police vehicles with the software and the cradles and the laptops, so they'll be able to do their job more efficiently. And if I, and when you, I know one last thing, I won't interrupt your time, but I know you brought up the thing about alternative fuels and all that, you know, their infrastructure and all that. Well, I'll tell you, if this was a perfect town and I could push for it, I wouldn't worry about them having gas cards and have to go up to Mobil or Exxon to get gas. I would put a big tank down near the police department or electric chargers or something, and let them pump, or the city garage, let them go there, get their own gas, it's meteor, boom, go on their way, they don't have to do it. That would be a perfect example that I'd love to do, we need to get funding for. So yes, are we thinking outside of the box? Yes, not only thinking outside, but we're flattening the corners and seeing if we can find anything underneath.
Okay, so hopefully by next meeting, so you may have some input on what we talked about then. Okay, thank you.
I just want to thank you again for the civil conversation, I appreciate it.
You're not used to that, huh? I'm not used to it, no.
Hi, Captain Susan Wake, Rio E. Toomaker, Salvation Army. I had a couple of questions, the first one, with the budget that you folks have worked tirelessly on, was there any emails, was there communication with the two absentee council?
No, they have not been involved with one single thing since they have not been here all year.
And I personally thank the three of you for your efforts in continuing to push hard because I know it's not an easy job when you have five people, let alone three. So, and taking time to look into other suggestions that people are bringing to the table seems above and beyond from where I'm sitting, because I run a big company, church too, and without enough hands, we're always shorthanded, I know how hard that is in that late nights of France, so thank you.
Thanks again.
I also wanted to thank the council and the residents of Manassas for the support of the Salvation Army this holiday season. We surpassed our kettle bowl, it was sixty thousand dollars, we passed it by almost up to sixty-three thousand, and we still have donations coming in, which is impressive for this area. We also, the Mont Valley Independent did a live broadcast and toy drive, I know that had a huge input and impact in our campaign, and I'm happy to say all three of our council members were there for that event and supporting us. We also did a thanks, oh, yes, Santa made a visit too. So, but then we had a Christmas meal, also served over two hundred and fifty people, and we had, Tony and his wife were serving that entire meal. So, on behalf of the Salvation Army and myself personally, I'd like to thank everyone at the table and the Mont Valley Independent for your support of the Salvation Army.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one question.
No.
It has nothing to do with city council. I noticed that the card that Captain Mondo used to have.
Mondo?
Could somebody make a bid on it, the buyer?
You mean two mandarins, the black card.
The black card, I always sit there.
There's two of them there.
Yeah, that's the one.
I want a card, I want a yellow one.
What's your name, where you live?
St. Edward, is that open for a bid?
I think we're gonna sell it, yeah.
I mean, can I make a bid on it?
We have to advertise it.
Advertise it, yeah.
Yeah, but can I make a bid?
Yeah, anybody can make a bid.
Okay, so when are you gonna advertise it, St. Edward?
For you, Ernie, yes, we will advertise it at the second meeting in January.
No personal.
You know the transmission's completely blown in these.
That's why I said by tomorrow it'll get very loud.
Could I have it, there's a truck trailer?
Maybe if you were to ask.
You can't do trailer.
Ernie, okay, well, before I make a motion to adjourn, I'd like to wish all you a happy Christmas we did last time, and a happy new year, hope you have a safe new year, and we thank you for coming out the way you do. You know, we're still open, we're always gonna be open to listen to everybody, we need all of your help. I've said this so many times, I've sounded like a bad reporter, but I'll continue to do it, you need to do it, because next year's gonna be a tough year, it's gonna be really tough, so. I'm a motion to adjourn?
Yes, motion to adjourn, second.
Motion.